Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session Agenda. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will reassess the meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up, item number two, Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session Agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I know our clerk has told us we don't have any cards that were submitted previously, but is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please get my attention right now. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to item number three, which is our Issue Review Session. Item 3A is our Tempe 311 Update, and so I think that would be Tanya Chavez, our Chief of Staff, and Kim Moncaill from Tempe 311 for a presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to kick us off today. My name's Tanya Chavez, Mayor, Council, Chief of Staff, and with me today I have Kim Moncaill, our Tempe 311 Supervisor, and we are going to provide you with an update on Tempe 311. I'm going to turn it over to Kim.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sorry, thank you. So first, I'd like to go over our performance measures that we have with the city of Tempe. All our performance measures fall under strong community connections. We have 2.03, single point of contact resolution rate that is greater than or equal to 75% of all incoming calls. 2.16 is a caller wait time, which is less than or equal to 60 seconds for 90% of our phone calls. And then 2.17 is respond to all inquiries, one business stay or less, for also 90% of our inquiries. I would like to note that Tempe 311, that the Tempe 311 team has continued to achieve and the target performance for all three performance measures for the last five years and beyond. 2.73, 2.03, the team has averaged a resolution rate of 83% over the last five years. Thank you. 2.16, again, over the last five years, the team has averaged a wait time of less than 60 seconds for 96.8% of our phone calls. Even our Spanish line, we exceed the caller wait time of 90% within 60 seconds. 2.17, over the last five years, the team has exceeded the performance measure and averaged 96.4 response, our response rate for our emails. Just a little overview of our Tempe 311. We are one call to City Hall. We handle most non-emergency operations. We do have seven full-time staff, and we are the single point of contact for city services. Tempe 311 launched in 2010, and I would like to pause and acknowledge Councilmember Jennifer Adams for her leadership in bringing this concept to the city all those years ago. We know that that was, that there was a lot of research and work that was involved in this endeavor. On a side note, I'd also like to state that I started in 311 in July of 2011, so I've been there from almost the beginning, and back then, we were taking calls for only solid ways and the city operator. To give you an idea of the call volume in December of 2011, we had a total of over 2,800 phone calls. This last December, our call volume was over 5,700. As there are many benefits to this service, I would, I would like to highlight that the, that this team is the face of the city, or as I like to say, virtual face, since we work from home. Our mission is really to provide the best customer service possible. I'd like to share with you a few stories that have had impact on myself and my team. These are just calls that we've received from residents. We have one gentleman that does call us frequently because he likes that we always answer the phone, and he specifically told us that. So, one caller, when we answered the phone, he was correcting the recording. It's nice to hear a person. I'm so happy to get a person when I call the city. This one was just this past week, so this just was a recent call. A resident called back after their work order was completed to say thank you, and that she felt a lot better after speaking with the customer relations specialist, and that she was grateful to be listened to. And obviously, you can see on the thing there, there's the, some of the other benefits that we have, and these are just a few stories of gratitude, and there are so many more, but we don't have time. As the city's priorities have evolved, ensuring seamless connection with the community became essential. Under Rosa and Chausty's leadership, there was a desire to get back to basics and focus on providing excellent customer service. As a result, we expanded Tempe 311's hours and our service days to better serve our community. We expanded from Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., to Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then also Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 to 5:00. That's a 42% increase in service hours. This strategy is, this strategy is working because from December of 2023 until the end of March, we received over 3,400 weekend phone calls. So this tells us that there is a need for this service.
Next, I'd like to share with you the ways in which the community connects with 311. We did a five-year calendar year look back at the types of way people connect with us, and as you can see, majority of those contacts are through phone and email. We, we, the team, this amazing team of Kim's handles roughly a little over 96,000 calls annually, and that breaks out to about 273 calls per person per day when fully staffed. It's incredible work that they've come a long way from the 24, 2700 calls that she initially mentioned to over, you know, 96,000, nearly 100,000. During COVID, we did peak, had the most calls, you know, in 20 and 2021, but steadily just kind of held around that 96,000 mark. Everyone has always asked, what are the top reasons why people call the city? Our top work orders for, again, for calendar year, the most work orders issued were for residential code complaint, followed by missed trash collection, illegal dumping, residential recycling missed collection, and then lastly, animal remains pickup. Also in December of 2023, Kim and myself knew that there was a need to better track the council communicators. I know it's been a discussion for mayor and council for several, several years. I've been with the city since 2001, and I can remember back as, as far back as 2005, how do we track and manage these? How do we know what they're calling in for? How quickly are we responding to our community? We quickly devised a kind of workaround to our 311 system, worked with the internal side of the system to be able to track that from the mayor and council staff team. And then, as you can see, over the last, again, calendar year, we've had 923 contacts. That breaks out to about 2.5 touches a day. Majority of those are through email, although we do still get some voicemails. And then I broke it down by category so you can kind of see the reasons why they're, they're connecting with mayor and council. Comments and statements, usually those are related to, we'll see on the next slide, new or proposed development, and we did a top 10 breakdown as to why they would be calling, connecting with mayor and council. Anywhere from streets, transportation services, financial services, code compliance. We are still refining the system and better, you know, creating better topic ideas to capture the data, because sometimes the, the emails are not clear. There may be five issues in one email. But really want to give kudos to Kim and her team for helping us develop an internal system to better be able to track, and to my team for being willing to kind of go the extra step to be able to do the data entry, although those are never fun, but it gives us an idea of how we can be proactive in some of these issues. And lastly, I'm excited to announce, I think it's been two years we've been working on a new CRM in a while. I want to give kudos to procurement Alicia Ruiz and Michael Green for being, being patient with us to ensure that we get what we are looking for. It's, it's, it's a good investment, so we want to make sure that we are crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, and having the best service out there. I'd like to also give kudos to Lisa Johnson and Andrea Vesali from IT with their patience as well. You know, we, you don't know what you don't know, and we asked a lot of questions on some of the deficiencies our current system has, just to ensure that we are going to have a better system. And I am super excited to report that we do have a new system coming online. We're expecting the rollout in January of 2026. We do project kickoff, I believe, in June, so it's a fairly short turnaround. And a lot of great features, really just giving the ability for businesses and residents to be able to take a lot of these things, self-creation for, you know, intake requests. They don't have to necessarily talk to someone. We're going to have the ability to offer a chat feature, test that at least on our, our new system, trying to keep up with technology and all the different ways that people want to connect with their local government. And that is all I have for tonight. We'll take any questions that you might have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Let me first go to Councilmember Hodge, then Councilmember Keating, then Councilmember Adams.
Well, thank you so much. First off, I want to say, great job. You did a phenomenal job on the, on your presentation. It really helped because I know a lot of people don't really understand what 311 is and how it works, and I think that you really broke that down, so thank you so much for that. I, my question is, where do we compare to other cities? Is there, how many other cities do we know of that has something, a system like 311, and how many are it? That's not a question for today, but I'm just curious. It's almost like bragging rights to say that we're doing so great when we go out into community, but I just would like to know, we, kind of where we stand when it comes to other cities when we, for our, you know, for our 311.
Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, we're happy to evaluate that and get that information to you. We don't know offhand.
I didn't think you would, but I just, I think that'd be something that we would love to hear about. And does, has it been ever highlighted, like in our, in our water bill, like, you know, the information about 311 and what you actually do, and kind of give like a summary of what you just gave us, so our constituents know that we are paying attention and that, you know, that we keeping a track of it?
Councilmember Hodge, the communication and marketing team does a great job. It's, it's one of the staples that is on the newsletter. They are continually doing informational posts and content in the newsletter, but happy to reach out with Chris to see, you know, if we have a real campaign established for that moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. A lot of good material there. My, my comments are on the, the new CRM that you want to bring forward. I know it's been a long time coming, and technology has progressed quite a bit. I think the AI chat is a great idea. I mean, that's something that I use all the time when I'm, need customer service needs. Not everyone enjoys that, though, so I would just ask if we could have some sort of button, you know, connect to, you know, somebody live, maybe even like a wait time, like your wait time would be 10 minutes, so maybe someone wants to figure it out in the chat if they could, but they could also just press that button. Every computer now has Zoom on it, so you can make not only calls but video calls right from your, any device, essentially. I just think people would like to have the option, is all I'm saying.
That's why we do have the AI chat.
Mayor, Councilmember Keating, absolutely. As Kim noted in her kind of customer statements, they love when people answer the phone, and that absolutely is going to be a priority, but we also want to provide other ways to be able to connect. I myself would go for the chat button because I don't have much time to talk to someone, but have the functionality to be able to do, to do that on. Again, it's just a test feature. I don't know that we necessarily purchase, have that purchased in our contract, but we want to try it and see, see if it works.
Yeah, definitely. Do let me know if you have that purchase, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Adams?
Not to age myself, but I went to anyway. I think it was like 15 or 16 years ago that city manager Rosa and Chausty and Cindy Lachey and myself went to California to look at a 311 center. It was a very successful 311 center. And so we did a lot of research and got that going, and with the help of Shawna Warner and Shelley Hearn. So I just, it's, it was, it was a great system, so we, we had a good role model to start off with, which really helped, and, and they were fighting with us, stealing their, their information. I know they're helpful, they mentored us, but I just, the, some of the, the concerns I've gotten is that it's not specific enough, like, like you can put like your trash within those. I'm giving you an example that might, might not even be the case, but I'm just trying to give you an example. So like trash, and then there's not a drop down like it is across the street, or this, you know, you can't like be more specific. So if there's like more areas for them to comment on, I think that would be helpful. I love 311. I think it's a great system, and I know a lot of people out there use it, so it's a really good way to communicate. And the numbers alone, that's incredible, to go to be almost at 100,000 calls a year. So I'm very proud of you and your team, and good job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Brandberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys. I, I am absolutely blown away that you guys answered that phone within 60 seconds, so like kudos to you, kudos to your entire team. That is, that's just phenomenal, especially in today's age. I just want to echo what Councilmember Keating said. I was going to bring it up, but he brought it up first. Like, you started off your presentation with, you know, examples of people being super excited that an actual human answered the phone, and then you ended it with a new system that's going to go, you know, start using AI. I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose that, you know, that part of the system. So, I mean, you answered my question, you don't have to go into it any further. I just wanted to echo that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the council, any further comments or questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item 3B, Tempe Financial Empowerment Center Planning And I should just ask our clerk, I know she said earlier that there weren't any comment cards, but I just want to double check that there were no comment cards in item 3B either?
Yeah, none more, none.
None, none at all, none for anything. All right, sounds good. Just double checking. So, all right, good afternoon, Tim and Rose, how are you?
Excellent.
Excellent, good. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tim Burks, Community Health and Human Services Director. I'm joined by Rose Harvey from Cities for Financial Empowerment. We're here to talk to you about our Financial Empowerment Center, or FEC, planning update. The goal here is to make sure we link this back, obviously, to core function, so we, the idea of making sure people have access to high-quality financial counseling, we see as a linkage to ending homelessness, both through eviction prevention and homeless prevention, and to getting our folks who were working through our shelter systems back on their feet steadily in a way that they don't return back into our systems, therefore reducing the overall poverty rate for our community, and making sure that the whole person is taken a look at. So we have digital literacy, we have, and financial literacy running through the empowerment center, envision center, rather. So I'll turn the, me to the presentation over to Rose and her, and I'll be here for questions.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rose Harvey. I'm the manager of FEC Innovations at Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. Thank you so much for hosting me today. I'm here in the city of Tempe this week, visiting from New York. So I'm here to talk about the Financial Empowerment Center Initiative. First, I do want to thank our national funders who support this work. A little bit about Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. We are a national philanthropic organization based in New York, and our work is to support local governments like yourselves in embedding financial stability into your initiatives and policies, and we do that by way of providing grant funding as well as one-on-one technical assistance. So talking about what is the Financial Empowerment Center? At its core, it is a public service that offers professional, individualized, one-on-one financial counseling as a no-cost public service available to all residents. This is a 15-year-old program model, and CFE Fund has been working with local governments for the past 10 years to replicate this across the country, and I want to show off our map for a minute. So this national program model is currently operating in 37 cities and counties around the country, and there are 20 other cities and counties in various stages of planning, like the city of Tempe. And despite being a national program model, we have a very intensive localized planning process to ensure that it works for every community and your residents. So you can see on this map that this program works not only for large cities like Nashville and Houston and New York City and Denver, cities in southern cities, west coast cities. I want to share, we have a few cities we're working with in the southwest, including Tucson and Santa Fe, to launch a Financial Empowerment Center, but we have not been able quite yet to launch one, so I'd love to see the city of Tempe be the first in the entire southwest region to launch this as a model for what this looks like for other cities and counties in your area. And I want to point to our national stats on the left. So over the past 10 years, this program model has served over 189,000 residents, helping them to reduce over $315 million in debt, that's about a third of a billion dollars, and build more than $61 million in savings. So going into detail about what is this Financial Empowerment Center and why it's such an impactful national longstanding program model, first, it is a no-cost program. So the FEC is open and available to everyone in the community over the age of 18. There is no restriction on documentation, income, program eligibility. Anyone in the city over the age of 18 is welcome to come in for services as many times as they want, and there are never any fees or charges. This is an individualized financial counseling program. We know that financial challenges are very complex, very thorny, very challenging to talk about, and so this program offers one-on-one support between one highly professionalized counselor and one client, talking about their background, their goals, their challenges, helping give them individualized next steps for their situation to see a difference in their financial profile. Financial counseling in the FEC program model is highly professionalized. It is not a part-time service. It is not run by volunteers. There is a nonprofit organization who actually delivers the financial counseling services, so it is a city-run but contracted out to a nonprofit to actually hire counselors who adhere to robust national training standards, be able to give the individualized professional guidance that clients deserve when they come into a city service. Financial counseling in the FEC is integrated. It is not meant to be a standalone financial counseling program, but it's really meant to support the existing work the city is already doing, and be a supportive program for all the other initiatives and priorities that you all have as a local government, ensuring that all your residents are supported from a holistic point of view. The FEC is very data-driven, so we provide all of our partners with a sales force platform at no cost that they use to oversee counseling. It collects over 200 data points per client. As a city service, you all deserve accountability and transparency. You'll be able to see in live time how many clients are serving, how many sessions, the impact on their credit scores, on debt, new bank accounts, savings being built, who were you serving, and any other kind of slice of data. And then lastly, we are trying to build a sustainable public service. So as a program that's been around for 15 years, we're not trying to launch a pilot program. We are having a very robust planning process so that when the service launches, it is ongoing and sustainable. So just like the city will collect your trash for free, it offers you professional financial counseling to all residents. And I really want to emphasize this role of government. This is what makes the FEC program model very different from other existing financial counseling programs. We believe very strongly at Cities for Financial Empowerment, the local governments, you all have a lot of power. You all, of course, have a very clear-seated interest in residents' financial health. You also have excellent convening power. There are lots of people in the community already doing this work, and you can bring them all together, the nonprofits, philanthropic organizations, financial institutions, city services, under one mandate and one pathway towards financial stability. We also know that through these financial counseling programs, cities and counties often hear about various financial issues, or scams, or wrongdoings that you all can use to inform your policies, your programs, consumer financial protection work, and then we know that there are lots of fringe services out there that are very costly, that are not high-quality, that are, you know, scams. So having the city service on, the city seal on the service helps make it a very trusted, reliable service for your residents. In the financial counseling model, residents can expect to receive services in the, safe and affordable banking access, increasing credit, decreasing debt, building their savings, and preparing for their legacy. This is a client-focused program. We know there's lots of shame and trauma attached to financial challenges. This is not curriculum-based. This is when one client comes in and says, this is where I'm at, this is my budget, my income, my goals, my challenges, and they meet with the counselor numerous times, getting individualized action steps specific to that client, helping them to see a difference in debt reduction, to see an increase in their savings, increase in safe and affordable bank accounts, and more. And so we are building out, you know, beyond general financial education workshops, which are an excellent starting place, but offering residents who have really thorny challenges or need more support, individualized guidance as much as they need it to help them improve their lives. I want to share some of our national statistics. The client profile looks different in every city. Largely, we do see that FEC clients are largely female, they're renters, they have lower incomes, higher debt amounts, they're often rent burdened, underbanked or unbanked, but we see that they're still succeeding. And you could see at this bottom line that clients who are increasing their savings are increasing them by a large amount. They are decreasing their debt by over $2,000, increasing their credit score because it's an individualized, high-quality program. As I mentioned, the FEC is a very integrated social service. There are many different social service areas your financial counseling program can support itself to, and so part of this planning process, we're getting feedback from various community stakeholders about what your priorities are as a city, if it's, you know, housing or workforce development, connecting with utility companies, having your 311 program, refer clients. I saw that financial services was a top 10 area of interest, veteran services. As a city-led service, you all get to control where do you want financial counseling to focus and prioritize its time. So I'm going to wrap up by say, so we did provide a $20,000 grant to the city of Tempe to be in this exploratory planning process, and we are working on a few things to have a fully-fledged plan in place by hopefully the end of the year. So working with, you know, Tim and his team to develop who is going to be that local government manager, part-time staff to oversee the program, ensure it's high-quality, it's being marketed to all residents, finding that nonprofit organization to actually deliver counseling services, finding your set of robust community partners, help make referrals to the program, developing training and marketing ideas, and then CFE Fund does provide a one-time grant of up to $150,000 to actually launch the program, helping the city secure match funding from public or private sources. So my colleague and I are here for two days, meeting with various stakeholders, I think with the city, Octavia and her team, bi-weekly in this planning process, and I'm very grateful for your time and interest in this program, and happy to take any comments or questions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Councilmember Chin, then followed by Vice Mayor Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I was excited about this presentation, as perhaps nerdy as that sounds. I think this could be a rising tide, right? I don't, I don't see any red flags on this. I'm focusing on the words you used, local priorities and integration into our existing programs and services. So what I'd like to see, we have some existing programs like College Connect. I think that helps in long-term financial stability and opportunities. Also, Newtown as an option. You're, you've already thought about this, right? Good, you're confirming for me. Also, we live, we're in Tempe, so we have the advantage of possible partnerships with Rio Salado Community College and University. Let's leverage those. Also, the VITA program, right, with tax. So would love to see that, the local integration, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
I love the smile on your face from, we had an advisory group meeting regarding this project and program, and everything that you said we talked about today. She is so smart. I love working with this lady. And we talked about Newtown, and VITA was listed, and there were so many incredible stakeholders that were there. I was really impressed with the people that you guys pulled together for this. The thing that I really, really love about this, and I was thinking about this all afternoon, is the fact that this is one of those things, as she says, rises- as she says, rises the tide. But I was thinking lifting people up and empowering people to control and manage their own financial health. And that the fact that this is open to anybody, that there's no income restrictions at all for this. You just have to be over the age of 18, and you get a one-on-one partner. I think that's pretty incredible. No cost, no financial qualifiers. It's data-driven. All of those things, I think, will make a huge difference in our community with what you will be able to do with this. So, I, one thing that, the small business part you did not mention, and I think that's really important because we have a lot of incredible people in this community who are entrepreneurs or who have small businesses. Can you share a little bit about what that does?
Yeah, absolutely. So, a very common program partnership is with small business. So, while the FEC focuses on individualized, personal financial counseling, there are a lot of early-stage, we call them micro-entrepreneurs, who are just thinking about starting a business. And there often is a lot of co-mingling of their personal and business finances. So, using their personal credit or personal emergency savings to launch their business, which does not help their personal situation if an emergency were to come up, and also makes it hard for them to understand like their assets and their revenue from a business side of things. So, it's not great for both personal or business. And so, just having a financial counselor be able to tell someone, "You can get a small business checking account. You can and probably should get a separate credit card for your small business services," helps them kind of decouple those services. They also can make referrals to other organizations that are doing actual small business counseling, could help them actually make a business plan or secure funding. And so, it is just one helpful step that people can take to start the process correctly to avoid getting into trouble down the line.
Okay, thank you. Tim, one question. What's the timeline that we're working?
Planning timeline, I believe, for this project is eight to 12 months. And that leads us to our community planning, our RFP for the nonprofit partner, and then implementation.
Can we make that six to eight months? I'm saying only because there, when, being on the Newtown Community Land Trust Board, and Cory was on the board also, there's a program that they had there where to be a part of the program, you had to learn a little bit about finances and checkings and things like that. This just seems like that next incredible step that I could just think of that whole group of people could be a part of also among so many other people in our community. It's like, I don't want to wait. I want it tomorrow. But I'll give you six to eight months. Can it happen any faster?
We will talk to our technical advisors and absolutely make sure that we keep the efficacy while moving at the speed of the need for our community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think this is fantastic. Financial literacy is so important. And I think about all the years that I wasted not planning for my future. And if only I had a resource like this. I think about all that money I would have lost in the stock market today as compared to the money I did end up losing today. So, I might need this now to retire. But outside of that, you know, you talked about groups that you want to, you know, kind of market to and make sure that are included. And I just wanted to name a few that I think this could really benefit. And those are Tempe Pre parents. I think that, number one, would be huge. Just informational brochure like you have here on the offerings, what it can do, and examples of how to grow family wealth. Tempe Works participants, as you know. Get them a bank account. Let's teach them smart ways to save and invest their money so they can see that their success continues to grow. Veterans, veteran services. Give their veterans coordinator, please, to offer it to them as well. They do have that kind of stuff in the military, but it's during boot camp and not paying too much attention. And then, finally, people that are using emergency assistance programs through the city as well. Emergencies come up, but there may be ways that we could help them recover from that emergency in a faster way.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. We actually, I think in the business meetings we talked about earlier, ideally, you have eight to 10 really strong business partners through local nonprofit connections. I joked with our team, I think we account for four to five of those nonprofits internally, with 60% of our parents being on a scholarship and all the other services we offer. A closed-loop referral network between all of our various silos in the city of Tempe is a part of this program and projects as well.
That's fantastic. I think this is going to be a very utilized and popular program in the city. So, I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. That's Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, thank you. My, I guess I'm going to go just a little bit more in-depth because we were talking about, I heard what Councilmember Chin said about College Connect. But there's going to be a lot more kids that needs to be connected that are not in College Connect. So, I was wondering, is there any way that we can make sure that the counselors at all of our schools can get this, especially for our seniors, you know, this information out there to them?
Absolutely. Councilmember Hodge, we will continue to work. As part of the development plan is a marketing strategy to make sure that we are reaching out to all of those constituency pipelines. And certainly, the school districts will be a part of that. Thank you.
Also, ASU, you know, just, you know, with the guidance counselors, they can have that up there. And are we partnering with DES at all? Because that is a big partner right there. If they have, I know they have their own, but it would be something more unique if they had something directly in the city of Tempe that they can work with, too. And our housing, anybody who's on a voucher, I mean, can get, you know, just, I guess, I guess I'm saying with my colleagues, I just want to hit all of the pockets, but the most vulnerable pockets that we don't like. Even working with our disability, is there going to be a section that can help with our families with disabilities or our disabilities so they can understand and get into it and know what's out there for them, too?
Absolutely. We'll make sure that we include them in the constituency and planning groups over the next few months. And I'll be remiss if I did not acknowledge that Mr. Gomez from ASU was at our advisory council meeting earlier today as well.
Yes. So, yeah, because it's important, it's vitally important because in the schools, they're not teaching this like they used to. I mean, you have to actually pay to learn about this. This is not one of the courses. When we were in school, you had to learn how to do certain things, but that's not how it is as it was. We have curriculum changes. So, I would love for our students to get the heads up on this.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, since the stock market lost $2 trillion, I think that we should start it tomorrow. And so, six months is too long at this point, right? This emergency situation. And I think CARE7, HOPE, and Park Rangers would also be good to have that knowledge so they can set up them with help. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Councilmember Brandberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am totally, I think this is a fantastic idea. And there is one group of individuals, I don't know how popular I'm going to be saying this, that I think we probably do really well in this type of setting. Those are those people that find themselves, for whatever reason, in our criminal justice system here in the city. I think they could probably use this as well.
Yeah, there are a lot of very strong partnerships with three entry programs, and those are often extremely motivated individuals who are very interested in getting their credit resolved and getting their savings to their first apartment and getting their bank account set up and justice-involved system and working with courts as well is a very promising partnership.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions? Wonderful. Sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. All right. Next up, item 3C, general business license. See, Lauren Josh here today. Come on up. Oh, we're getting different faces here on the front. I love this. So, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Laura Calder, Financial Services Director. And this is Josh Weiss, the Tax and License Manager. And we are here to talk to you about a concept of having a general business license for the city of Tempe. Is that it? Hi, there we go. And so, our goal tonight is to, hold on one second, is to introduce that general concept and ask for your support to move forward with a business license for Tempe. So, tonight, you're going to hear us talk about the ideas or what that might look like, that program might look like. We're going to look at the types of businesses that we might require having a license and exemptions, as well as enforcement, fees, penalty structure, and timeline. And what we're going to actually present tonight is our recommendations. And those recommendations are based on what we've heard from other cities, our peers in other cities. And we've done some research, some internal stakeholder feedback as well. And we've had several meetings with the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, and we've incorporated their feedback into the recommendations as well. So, first, let's talk about why. So, kind of the benefits of this program. We want to get deeper business demographics. So, we want to be able to track business types and see more information on different sectors of businesses, track minority and disadvantaged ownerships of businesses, even getting to like the number of employees and recommend, and revenue groupings. All of that to get a really good sense of who's operating in our city and get deeper than we ever could with the data that we have available to us. Talking about data we have available to us, we have a lot of data that we just can't touch. So, sales tax data, our transaction privilege tax. We have a lot of business data, not to the same depth as I just mentioned. But that information is highly confidential and strictly restricted to only several people who can actually access that data within each organization. And we estimate, based on that information, that there are more than 30,000 businesses or licensable businesses operating in Tempe. And we only have good information on about 1,300 of those businesses. So, a significant gap there. And the business license would help us shore up that gap. What it will do for us, having that complete database of Tempe businesses will help us to communicate essential updates and provide some business support. We can only help the businesses that we know about with outreach programs, et cetera. And so, we would be hoping that we could, you know, have that complete database to help us help the businesses that are in our city. We could also give them information about ordinance changes, city services, programs. But we wouldn't be very, we wouldn't just keep that information to ourselves. We would want to share that data also publicly. We, with our other licenses that we have, we have an interactive GIS map. And so, you can see in different areas of the city who, which businesses are operating. How could that be used for a business? You know, such things as clusters of competing businesses. So, you know, a new business might say, well, you know, don't want to go into that area, but maybe there's another area that has, that would be more beneficial for them. Or complementary businesses might say there are this business type in that location, and my business would benefit from being near those other businesses, as well as vendors and suppliers being near each other. So, we see lots of areas where this information would be useful to everybody, really, not just our departments.
Okay, now, we can talk about our recommendations for which businesses would be required to have a general business license. Obviously, if there's a business permanently located here at the city of Tempe, we would want them to get a general business license. Again, as Laura just said, this gives us a better outlook, a better visual on who is actually here and operating in the city of Tempe. That also includes businesses that are typically not required to get a transaction privilege tax license, which would be service-based businesses, such as a chiropractor, an accountant, those types of businesses. If a contractor is based here in the city of Tempe, then of course, they would need a license. But even if they are not based in the city and they have a job or are doing a development, constructing a development here in the city, we would require them to get a business license as well. Only one if they have multiple job sites. One license. We have a slight amendment to this slide, actually. Based on legal supremacy laws and talking with our city attorney's office, we cannot require federal or state government agencies to get a business license. So, we would actually recommend an exemption of all these. However, we would still recommend nonprofit entities do require a business license. Some businesses that would be exempted from a license are any businesses that currently have a regulatory license with us. So, Laura mentioned, we have about 1,300 regulatory licenses. That's based off of a recommendation from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns as well to not recreate the wheel for these businesses that have already provided information. With that being said, if this does pass, we would enhance and update all of our current regulatory license applications to mirror and match the information that we are now going to want to be collecting off the business license application. Temporary businesses, businesses that operate out of special events, like a farmer's market. We had Tempe Blooms a few months ago. Those types of businesses would not be required to get a business license, again, unless they're based permanently here. Those are all handled through special events with the tracking and organization. Some other, a little bit more specific exemptions that we have in our ordinance would be casual business activities. So, if somebody's making a sale less than four times a year, that's not, would not constitute a business activity where they would need a business license. Childcare, there's a line that would be mandated to get a license as outlined in Arizona Vice Statute 36. Again, a fine line between babysitting and an actual childcare establishment. If they are not mandated, then they would not need[1543.33] establishment. If they are not mandated, then they would not need to get a business license with us. And you do also see independent contractors, sales reps from companies that act on behalf of their parent company. They would not be required to get a business license as well. And then lastly, some educational slash tutoring services, piano lessons, what have you, those would not be required to get a business license if they are not in a commercial location. We have some other businesses, business types that we are, again, prohibited by state law from licensing that you see on the screen there. Real estate brokers, of course, out of state businesses, residential rental properties, and then captive insurers as well. We're proposing a $25 annual fee for our business license. We currently have a $50 annual TPT license fee. So the complete total annual liability for most businesses would be $75 between the two business, the two licenses that they would be required to have. You can see on the screen on the table there also how the $25 fee would stack up based on other valley cities here locally. And then to encourage signups, to encourage adoption and compliance, we would propose a sort of a trial period for businesses that sign up initially and right of way. So if a business chooses to sign up prior to January 1 of 2026, they would have no fee when they do sign up, and they would not need to pay a renewal fee until January 1, 2027. So they get quite a big period there, just as we encourage these signups. Now, if a business misses this sort of five-month window for free signups, and they choose to sign up after the first of the year of 2026, they would be assessed that $25 annual license. The administration of the license would come through my team, Tax and License, just like with all of our other regulatory licenses. Somewhat different to some of our other regulatory's, we would not require other departments, such as fire, police, or building safety, to review and approve this license application. It would just come through my team, and we would take the information and approve the license, as long as they upload the proper information and answer the questions. For enforcement, we're trying to do as much education as we can. And consistent with what we currently do for other similar licenses, my team would be sending out a lot of letters. We take plenty of word-of-mouth complaints and tips, and would reach out to any, any and all businesses that we do get information about, routine business, routine visits to businesses. My team does a lot of other things with taxes and licenses that we can also, again, increase our education now for a business license in our normal course of business. Some penalties that we would assess for this license would be, again, consistent with all of our other regulatory's. So they have 30 days after the expiration of their license to renew and submit that renewal, and then pay the annual fee. If they do not renew by the expiration of 30 days, we would recommend a 50% license fee, which we see there is $12.50. And then also, another penalty that would be in line with that 50% penalty would be if they are operating without a license, and they don't sign up through this initial period. The timeline of where we're at and where we're headed, you've already met with the Chamber of Commerce twice and received positive feedback. We have a draft ordinance that today actually was set to the review committee to offer any feedback, address any questions, so we can get to a final product there. Obviously, we're meeting with you all today, and we have public outreach scheduled if this is to go further as well. We are scheduled for two council hearings, May 22, June 5. And then if this is passed, again, it would be effective August 1, which starts that kind of five-month grace period for, to encourage signups. And again, hopefully, we get as many as we can within the first five months, and they would not have a renewal until January 1, 2027.
So this is the point where we're looking for some feedback, consensus direction. But I understand you probably have some questions first, before we start to kind of go through these lines and ask you for your direction and support and how to move forward. So happy to take some questions.
Okay, sounds good. I've got three people in the queue so far. I've got Councilmember Keating, Councilmember Adams, then Vice Mayor Garland. So Councilmember Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. This stuff has been talked about for quite some time. I'm curious, have you reached out to the Tempe Chamber and what their thoughts were? Care to share any feedback as far as that goes?
Yes.
They did?
We met with them twice.
Oh, geez. Well, never mind.
But I'm happy to share.
I was thinking about my questions. Okay, then, on to my second question. Permanent locations in Tempe, permanent businesses in Tempe, does that include private homes, if I say didn't taxes out of my home?
Yes, yeah. If you think of it as the way, if you are legitimately concerned itself in business, you would be required to have a business license. We don't really see a difference if you, yes, do, are a bookkeeper or CPA that operates out of your home, as opposed to if you have a office location here in downtown, you're both in business, effectively doing the same thing. You would be required to have a business license.
Okay, thank you. I like that you're offering kind of a window for people to get in free. I think that's wise, particularly if we're going to, you know, kind of use this as a resource to businesses and to organizations, to organize businesses. I guess my one suggestion on that would be just kind of blanket make the first year free for a new business. If I start one and two years from now, just, hey, you're going to want to be a part of this registration, because there's A, B, and C benefits. First year's free. And then I like the fact that it's only $25. So it's not, it's not burdensome on a business to get signed up.
Yeah, thank you.
That's my only feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm a huge supporter of businesses, and I think this is a good way to work with businesses, and also with the city, and kind of have more communication with businesses in our city, and ways that maybe we could help that we haven't even thought of yet. So I like it. I like that the Chamber of Commerce endorsed this. That means a lot to me. And it's been really an excellent presentation. So thank you very much for your, your presentation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Garland and Councilmember Chin.
Yeah, I love that this is, you guys have been working with the chamber, because I think that's really important, that communication between the city and the chamber, and that relationship is really important to us for doing that. So I'm glad they signed off on this. I had a question about tobacco license. Is that in, this is in addition for the people who have the tobacco license for their businesses?
Since they already have a regulatory license, we would not require them to also get a general business license.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Chin, then Councilwoman Brandberg.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been said, but I think it's worth saying again, so you know that we all like this. Thank you for making the chamber a partner in this. That they're in, they are an important relationship for us. About the penalty. So on that, the slide you have up here, it's, they would need to, if they do not renew after 30 days, so they would need to pay the 25 fee plus the 50%.
That's correct. Yeah, it'd be a 37.50.
Okay, 37.50. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love the idea. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea. My only concern is you've got some folks out there that have been in business for 20, 30 years, they're in their 50s, you know, this is going to be brand new for them. So making it as easy as possible, especially if they're not technologically as advanced as most, you know, of the younger generation are, like, I'm going to put myself in the older generation category there, just to make it easy for them to be able to do it, maybe offer different, different ways of doing it.
We do have paper applications that we are required to offer for other regulatory licenses. We rarely ever see them filled out and processed, but we do have that available, and we can develop something similar to that as well. My team is also always available for, we encourage walk-ins, we encourage appointments to be made, so we can always help people that come in to fill out their applications for them online and help them get through those steps, too.
Sounds good. Councilmember Hodge?
All I want to say is that I'm fully supportive of it, most definitely. I think it's a great, great decision to make.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm supportive as well. The only question I have, I guess, too, is I know that Councilmember Keating talked about kind of like a one-year kind of lead-in, and I guess the only thing we have to probably give direction on is that item. But it sounds like everything here in terms of the exemptions and the $25 fee, $50, 50% penalty, that's all fine, that's all council approves. But any other thoughts about Councilmember Keating's idea about kind of delaying this for a year, kind of phasing it in over a year from council?
Mayor, I want to be clear. I'm just, I'm saying the first year is, I'm not, I don't want to fade.
Oh, first year is free.
I don't want to delay the program. I'm just saying, regardless, if you sign up five years from now, your first year is free. We're waiving that $25. Councilmember Chin doesn't like it.
Councilmember Chin?
I say go. If we've made the decision, let's go. Sort of like that Real ID, we keep pushing it and pushing it, right?
I've got mine, you know.
Just go.
I want to be clear. I'm not delaying the program at all. I'm just saying that the $25 fee for the first year is free to new businesses. I'm not saying.
To new businesses?
Correct, yeah.
No, I don't have any issue with the, either way, I'm okay with the timeline as presented.
You're okay with as is?
Okay, so Councilmember Keating wants to have it free. Councilmember Chin says that she'd like to adopt it as presented. Anyone else?
I, I like Councilmember, I like Councilmember Keating's idea about giving it to new business for free for one year. I think that shows integrity on our side of the city of Tempe, and it makes people want to come to our city if, when we do things like that. So yes, I'm for Councilmember Keating's idea.
Okay, sounds good. Someone else have a hand up, or Vice Mayor Garland?
I, I think, I think it's a great thing to offer, but it's $25. So it didn't seem like, if it was like $100, I would probably be more likely to say, yeah, let's waive the first year. But it's $25. So I'm thinking we just kind of just leave it the way it's set. That's my thought.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Councilwoman Brandberg?
Didn't really want to have to go on record as saying it, yeah, but I'm fine with what Vice Mayor Garland and Councilmember Chin said.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. I was going to say the same thing. I totally understand what Councilmember Keating and Councilmember Hodge are saying, too. But I think, but my comfort level is because it's only $25. If this was going to be exponentially higher, then I would probably argue for the same thing. But since it's only 25 bucks, I'm comfortable with it as presented as well. So, okay, all right, sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, but great suggestion. So, all right. Let's then go to item number four, call to the audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the Committee of the Whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Are there any cards, Madam Clerk? I guess I could ask again.
None.
All right, I figured, you know, hey, different portion of the meeting, I figured I should just keep asking. But I'll move on to item number five, which is Committee of the Whole. First up, item 5A, proposed council subcommittees. Per City Council Rule 7, subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So are there any proposals for a new council subcommittee at this time? All right, hearing none. Let's go to item 5B, council subcommittee status updates as needed or recommendations for council direction. First up, item 5B1, nuisance ordinance, council subcommittee, proposed amendments to the Tempe CD code relating to nuisances and property enhancement, and nuisance parties and unlawful gatherings. I'll look to Vice Mayor Garland, any updates?
I do have an update, but I just want to say, Randy, before you got here and before council meeting started, I was just telling somebody what a big heart you have, and you just proved it by trying to move that forward. So I just want to say that. So our nuisance ordinance subcommittee has, has met, and what we are looking for now is to move this forward with consensus from the council. We all agree, and everybody on councils, in improving our neighborhood safety and enhancing the quality of life for our community is like one of the most important priorities that the city council has. And through this, and with that perspective, I thought we needed to look at and review our nuisance ordinance and our loud party ordinance for our communities. We have all received letters and phone calls about loud, loud parties and continuous parties in our community. And that's what kind of spurred this, this ordinance that we looked at. It was started in September 2024 with the mayor and Councilmember Chin. And we met, we had several different departments that were part of this. It was the police, the fire, community development, neighborhood services, our city attorney, and we had several residents that were able to join us to be part of the stakeholder group as we met and discussed the amendments. And really, this is to strengthen the ability for the city to protect our neighborhoods. That's what was the most important that we were trying to work on. The critical, important improvements they were looking at was reducing the burden of excess phone calls to the police department, to the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department for habitual violators, and to hold them accountable in those areas. So now with this ordinance and the way that we have written some of these amendments is, we have the tools now for the city to hold our tenants and our property owners responsible for the community impact on those properties that disrupt our neighborhoods and our quality of life in our neighbors, neighborhoods. It eliminates the 90-day clean slate that we had, and increases that to a year, which will be able to help us in our neighborhoods. It doubles the fines from $500 to $1,000 to $4,000. And it protects those who might be victims of crime or need emergency medical services. And so I look to my colleagues now to support this ordinance and the amendments as a balanced approach to keeping our neighborhoods safe and our neighbor, neighbors safe as we continue to enhance the quality of life for our residents.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garland. Any comments from anyone? I guess I can just say, I am fully in support, obviously, being on the committee of moving this forward. And I agree. I mean, I know, I've seen a couple of people comment online and talk about, oh, it's the city of Tempe trying to be the fun police. But the fact of the matter is, that's not the case. We obviously see many situations where there frankly can be nuisance parties at events in our community that really do just disrupt the quality of life for a lot of folks here. And I think all we're trying to do is ensure that we, that everyone who lives and works in this community has the opportunity to live a happy, peaceful existence in any neighborhood that you want to, or your business has the opportunity to succeed and to grow. And so I think that, you know, giving our folks the additional tools that Vice Mayor Garland talked about, to allow for that, and to give our police department and the folks who are involved in this kind of enforcement, the ability to enforce those rules, I think that really is critically important to ensuring life, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for anyone who wants to reside in our great city. So I fully support Vice Mayor Garland's recommendation. Anyone else? Councilwoman Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I am absolutely in support of this. I mean, I will tell you, as I walked around neighborhoods when I was running, and even going to some of the neighborhood meetings with the proliferation of VRBOs that are in our neighborhoods and some of the things that are going on. It's not somebody's birthday party that happens once a year. It's something that happens once a month. So I am absolutely in support of this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brandberg. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I also am in favor of this.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
Mayor, I'm in support of it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hodge. All right, sounds good. So Vice Mayor Garland, it sounds like we have consensus to move forward. So thank you again for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.
All right. Let me now look to the councilmembers to have, see if they have any verbal updates on the other remaining items on the agenda. I'm going to start here with item 5B2, heat safety for Tempe and contract workers, council subcommittee. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much of an update. We're still working on an ordinance. I'm pretty, pretty happy with it thus far. I ran into a member of a neighboring city, city council, over the weekend, and was kind of bragging about this effort. So I'm excited for a draft ordinance coming soon.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next up, item 5B3, increased advocacy for Tempe youth with disabilities, council subcommittee. Councilmember Hodge, any updates?
Yes, Mayor. The subcommittee held its fifth meeting on March 28. And we heard from the Arizona Association of People Supporting Employment First about their efforts to promote inclusive workforces initiatives statewide. We also are reviewing our goal-setting priorities. Due to the fact of the budget cuts in, in DC, it changed a little bit of how we are going forward on our advocacy. We also reviewed all of our, our guide. We have a resource guide that we're coming up, we're developing, and that is in the last stages. So, and if you please check the website, you'll know when our next meeting is. We haven't set the date yet. Thank you.
Saying, thank you, Councilmember Hodge. All right, next up, item 5B4, revitalization of Tempe Town Lake Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Amber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't have an update. We have not. Our next meeting is actually next Wednesday. So with the next work-study session, I will be able to talk a little bit more about that then.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That brings me to item 6, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. So do councilmembers have any future agenda items you'd like added to a future issue review session?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Hodge?
I do. I, like, I talked to Waddell, and we had, in the school, we had our demographers report showing what the comitale will be within our school districts. Would love for council to hear that report. She thinks it's a great idea. So it's a demographer, so we can have them report out, because it kind of talks about our development in our city. So kind of you, we see one half of it, they see the other half, and try to bring those halves together.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I see our city manager nodding in approval, Councilmember Hodge, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any other councilmembers, any other future issue review session items? Nope. Okay, hearing none. I'll move to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I'm actually going to cede my time this evening. I know, Councilmember Amber, you might have an announcement for a special someone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure a lot of you know it's, and if you don't, you're going to find out right now. But it is my council assistant's birthday. I won't tell you how old she is. But yes, and I think there are actually some cupcakes, still some cupcakes left out up on the third floor, if you've got a sweet tooth coming up. But yes, if you see her, she's out there in the beautiful teal suit. So tell her happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Brandberg. Happy birthday, Melissa. So we're very glad to have you here.
Happy birthday, Melissa. Happy birthday, Melissa.
Oh, yes. Vice Mayor Garland has something as well. Please.
I just wanted to say real quick, I think she's working her way back in the building. But at the last council meeting, I had mentioned about somebody who came to my Young Women's Conference, who got there at 5:30 in the morning, but the doors didn't open until 7:00. But that's how badly she wanted to be there. She is shadowing me today, and I just wanted just to say thank you to Kira McGee. She shadowed me today, and she wanted to learn a little bit more about what the city of Tempe does. And I'm just so impressed with her, and I'm glad she was here with us today. So thank you, Kira.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have any additional announcements. Madam City Manager?
No announcements this evening, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Which brings me to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session will be on April 24, 2025. We are adjourned at 5:09 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.